The Chair will call to order tonight's regular meeting of the Board of Education. Roll call please.
Ms. Redonia?
Here.
Mr. Avia?
Here.
Ms. Steckedy?
Here.
Ms. Hoover?
Ms. Conover?
Here.
Mr. Maron?
Here.
Stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
The first item on the agenda is closed session. The Chair will entertain a motion to enter closed session to discuss personnel issues and student discipline.
So moved. Second.
Roll call please.
Ms. Conover?
Yes.
Mr. Maron?
Yes.
Ms. Steckedy?
Yes.
Ms. Coyle?
Yes.
Mr. Avia?
Yes.
Ms. Redonia?
Yes.
Okay, adjourn to closed session. The Chair will call to order tonight's regular meeting of the Board of Education.
Okay, the board is resuming after closed session. The agenda, we're going to move around on the agenda a little bit tonight and do the approval of minutes first. The chair will entertain a motion to approve the minutes of the November 16, 2021 regular meeting of the Board of Education as presented.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, motion carries. The chair will entertain a motion to approve the minutes of the closed session of the November 16, 2021 regular meeting of the Board of Education as presented.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, motion carries. The chair will entertain a motion to approve the minutes of the December 8, 2021 special meeting of the Board of Education as presented.
So moved. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, motion carries. We're going to come back to public comment after the tax levy hearing. So we're going to move to item F on the agenda, the consent agenda. The chair will entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented. Personnel recommendations. Tarshama Jackson Jr., Westmont High School Assistant Boys Track and Field Coach. Resignations and a retirement. Number two, approval of board travel expenses. Number three, renewal of SSCIP insurance agreement. Number four, approval of the additional November 2021 expenditure report. Number five, ratification of the November 2021 regular payroll. Number six, disposal of equipment, stationary bikes, Westmont Junior High School. Number seven, disposal of equipment technology. Number eight, approval of December 2021 expenditure report. Number nine, approval of AFR shared services or outstanding requirement report. Number 10, approval of student tours.
So moved.
Second.
Roll call please.
Mr. Maron?
Yes.
Ms. Steckity?
Yes.
Ms. Coyle?
Yes.
Mr. Avia?
Yes.
Ms. Hoover?
Yes.
Ms. Redonia?
Yes.
Ms. Conover?
Yes.
Laura, if I could just interject a minute, I did want to bring to the board's attention that the skip renewal this year does not include the cyber liability insurance. So they are still marketing that product line and we'll be bringing that to you once we have that information. So there will be an additional cost and I'm not really sure how much that is going to be. So just, I want you to, you know, be aware that there will be additional cost. And that's one of those very difficult lines of coverage because of all of the security risks that are happening in school districts and businesses. So, and again, the district is working on, you know, multi-factor authentication and meeting some of the requirements required by cybersecurity insurers. So I just wanted to make you aware of that.
Thanks, Kim. So we're going to move into information and discussion with the update on the 2021-2022 school year first.
Okay, and as we've been doing with all of our board meetings, we want to update our community on how the school year is going during the pandemic. And we always start with some of the same basic principles that we've been working with and obviously the health and safety of our students and staff. That's the number one priority. And this year as well, we have a commitment to full-time in-person learning and knock on wood, we've got three more days before our winter break and we've been able to stay in person. And so we've been able to hold to that principle. We are cognizant of our, the social emotional needs of our students. We're also providing meaningful and engaging academic experiences. And, and again, being in person on a regular basis helps for that consistency and stability for our students and staff. And we continue to provide staff development. DePace County continues to operate at a high level of transmission. The new cases per hundred thousand, this is as of last Friday, are trending over 377 and the positivity rate is up to 5.88%. And thank you to Carlos saying, hey, is there a way that we can show kind of the trend of what we've been seeing rather than just showing what has happened most recently? And so this chart shows you back when you look at October 22nd, so a little bit past the midpoint. We were under 3% positivity, both in our community and also in DePace County. And now as of December 10th, you can see our local community is all over 4%, in some cases about 5%. And then the county is over 5%. And so it started probably to uptick after Halloween. There were probably a lot of gatherings and then now we're kind of taking a second wind after Thanksgiving. And I'm guessing after the holidays, we're going to continue to see that, that upward trend. New cases per hundred thousand, those are the two criteria that we look at is our average positivity rate over a seven-day span and then our new cases per hundred thousand. Again, you can see as of October 22nd, we were trending to get dropped below 100 for the county. And now by And now by December 10th, we're well over 100 and as a county, we're 377. So you can see again that rise that we're seeing in our positivity rate. And so we definitely wanna make sure we're maintaining the mitigations in place. In terms of our staff data, at least up until Friday, we had no positive cases. We did have a positive case of one of our teaching assistants that we found about, out about at the beginning of this week. And so that will be recorded in the next set of data. But we haven't, since October 12th, we haven't experienced any new positive cases until this week. From the steering perspective, since our last board meeting, we have seen some positive cases. And again, we've had some reported already this week and so we're starting to see that increase in positive cases. The one thing I wanna note, it's kinda small at the bottom of the slide, but, you know, we're, we're hoping that now the five to 11-year-olds are eligible for the vaccine. We're hoping families choose to get their children vaccinated because it does make a difference in those close contacts and having to be excluded from school. And so you look at the junior high, we had 15 close contacts. Five of the students were vaccinated, so they didn't have to be excluded. The high school, we had 18 close contacts and we had 11 students who were vaccinated. And then also students who were positive in the last 90 days also did not have to be excluded. But, so again, definitely, you know, and that exclusion can run from anywhere to 10 to 14 days for students. And so that's a lot of time out of class if we can avoid that. Again, the transmission levels, it's the two criteria, the number of new cases per hundred thousand, then also positivity rate. And for a while, their positivity rate was looking really good. We're still over 100, but again, we're seeing that positivity rate increase and also those new cases increase as well. So I think we'll be in the high level of transmission for a while. In terms of the guidance that we follow, again, the masks are still required in schools. We're doing physical distancing, three feet, and on our buses, masks are required. And contact tracing, as long as students are masked, the contact tracing is done at, at three feet. And again, just a reminder that schools really do not have an option to defy the orders. There are penalties for school districts that do. And as a reminder, especially, we're seeing again this uptick in positive cases. So if students have symptoms, really, parents should be keeping their students home, we know it's inconvenient. But we really wanna make sure that we maintain a safe, healthy environment. Again, with the masking, close contact is less than three feet for 15 minutes in a 24-hour period. Unmasked, it's six feet. And so it's a much easier to be a close contact. And, and again, the, if you're unvaccinated and you test positive, you're quarantined for 14 days. Close contact can be 10 to 14 days depending upon testing. And if the student is, you know, quarantined at home, is not going out publicly, doing those things, then they can return in, in 10 days. We did host a vaccination clinic on December 11th, this past Saturday. We had about 100 pre-registered for the vaccine and we had a nice number of students coming through. I'm waiting for the IDPH to tell me, they also had walk-ins as well, they welcomed walk-ins as well. So we're trying to find out if we had any walk-ins who came in and saw what the total is. But as a reminder, we're also hosting a clinic on January 8th at our junior high. Families who got the first dose the 11th, they also have an appointment now for the 8th to get their second dose. But that clinic on the 8th is also, if somebody wants to start the series, they can. Unfortunately, we don't have another date, they'll have to find that second dose at a different location. We're also having the booster shot, both, all three, Johnson-Johnson, Visor, O'Durina are all provided at the clinic and then welcome, walk-ins are welcomed as well. So hopefully people will take advantage of that on January 8th.
Kevin, on the vaccination clinic, you had 100 people signed up prior to, do you have any idea what the percentage of that 100, those 100 people, what percentage showed up that day?
Uh, no, we don't, we're waiting on that, that data from the IDPH.
Okay, thanks.
So, and the other breakdown we want is what percent were students that were vaccinated as well.
Right, of course.
Looking for that data as well.
Understood, thanks.
But we even had some of our employees come through for their boosters, which was, which was nice. Any other questions? All right, all right.
Thanks, Kevin.
I'm sorry, I thought you were gonna continue.
But that's, that's it.
No. With the testing, do you have any, like, numbers for, for that as far as?
We have, thanks for mentioning that. The testing that we're doing, we have, I believe, last time, we got an updated list, we were at about 93. And that's, some staff and students are testing weekly. We haven't had any positive tests, uh, results out of those who have taken it. And we're doing it every Monday in all of our schools. And families can still sign up for it if they wanna take advantage of it.
Have you had any that, like, child is ill and they wanted a test, have you had any of those?
We haven't had that situation yet.
Is that an option still?
That is an option. We, we did have a couple of, you know, I take that back, I think the first week, we did have a couple of families show up and say, you know, I didn't register, but I really want my child tested. And because the parent was there, we were able to do it. When they register ahead of time, we already received the parent consent. So if a parent wants to have their child tested without registering them, they do have to be present to sign the consent form.
Great, any other questions for Kevin? Okay, we still have a few minutes before the tax levy hearing, so I think we should move on to the board reporting from the IASB. But just be aware, at 7:00, we will have to move to the tax levy hearing. So I think this is just our reports out from the conference and any things you all want to mention about your experience.
It was nice, I mean, nice being educated by other school districts. Learning what's going on in those buildings and just getting advice from other people and bouncing ideas back and forth. So I enjoyed it. I mean, I, you guys all got my memo about some of the things that went on and I felt it was just information you needed and discussion going further on voting. That was a fun experience, like, and listening to everyone. Because you were able to debate each resolution in the room at the time. So if we had had any issues, we were able to step up and debate and just put our opinions out there, so I liked it.
I was at that same, that same session as you about the mental health. It was interesting, their high school was grabbing students that volunteered. And they were kinda teaching, training them how to see the signs in other students and their friends and, and report that to a safe adult. You know, so to kinda head off any issues. And it was a very full session, it was, had good information and actually copied the link, sent the link to all of us, so.
Yeah.
It was a very good session.
And if the public wanted to know, it's mentalhealthfirstaid.org. That is where the whole class is on and the certification and all that, so.
I had, I had three, three big takeaways from the sessions that I attended. One was on communication. And, you know, we, we also, I'm a member of the PR committee, for, for the board and for the school district. And it was driven home to me at the sessions that I attended that communication is a really difficult thing for a board to manage. And it's something that the administrators and the teachers in this district are the ones that are gonna have to manage this. It's not something that the board can do. And that, that one kinda drove a stake through my heart a little bit, but at the same time, at the same time, it, it, it made sense. It made more sense than anything else on communication that I saw. The other thing that, that I learned a lot about was the, the specific role of a board. We've talked about this in our, in, in the past, but we really can't approve anything that's not brought to us. We don't develop what's brought to us, we look at it and we approve it or we don't. And that's, that's where it begins and it ends. And also, it was really, really clear to me that the most important decision a board can really ever make is probably the decision on hiring a superintendent.
Absolutely.
That one, like, the weight of that one really, really, I felt it a lot in, 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 in the couple of days that I was there. And the last thing was the, on equity and inclusion, the, the second day, the keynote speaker, he, he also kinda crushed me. The one thing, the big takeaway from that, from that session for me was his comment of access is not inclusion. And that we need to think as a district, as a board and as a district, that just making things available isn't inclusion. And there's a lot more to it than that. And that, since we're short on time, I'm not gonna go into what all that was, but I, but I will over the coming months.
I just wanna echo that, that was the highlight of, of that, of the conference too, was that keynote speaker.
Yeah.
Lots of things we learned, but.
That's great.
Really good.
We do have to move to our tax levy, so if there's more comments on the IASB, did anybody else have extra comments that we should come back to it or are we good?
Yeah, can we come back to it?
Okay. Okay, so we are going to move to the public hearing for the tentative tax levy. The President of the Board of Education calls the public hearing to order regarding the proposed 2021 tax levy. Business Manager Kim Anderson will review the proposed 2021 tax levy.
Okay, we presented the levy on, at the November 16th board meeting. And then after that meeting, we posted the tentative levy in, on December 2nd in the Liberty Suburban newspaper. So just to review the levy proposal, the sum of $18 million for the education fund, $3 million for operations and maintenance fund, $1.2 million for transportation, $400,000 for IMRF, $475,000 for Social Security, $130,000 for tort immunity and $3.6 million for special education purposes.
Does anybody have questions or comments on this? Any additional comments from the members of the board regarding the proposed 2021 tax levy? Are there any public comments concerning the proposed 2021 tax levy? We have a public comment regarding the tax levy.
Yeah, so how does that work, does that go on a ballot somewhere? How does the community learn about the tax levy? Because that's what we're thinking, property tax, right?
You learn about the tax levy through the meetings that we hold?
No, I know, but like, not everyone knows to go on your website, so are you, then, where else would you put it?
We published it in the newspaper on December 2nd.
I don't give the newspaper, so how else?
Isn't it posted in the building? Here as well?
Nope, those are the two avenues that we use.
What newspaper?
The Liberty Suburban newspaper.
And where would I even get that?
You would subscribe to it or could go online to access it.
Okay, so how would I, so my neighbor who's an AB, how would he know to go to Liberty Newspaper or your website to know about a tax levy? I mean, like, how are you getting this out to the community?
We're, again, you know, Kim has said it, it's, uh, every November, there's a tentative levy that's presented at our board meeting, it's part of our, our board book. It's also published in the newspaper and then it's presented tonight. Legally, those are the requirements that we have to meet and so we're meeting our legal requirements.
So does that go on a ballot, do we vote on it or?
No, it does not go on a ballot.
So you guys just approve a tax levy, my tax, my property tax goes into it?
It's not a referendum, right?
It's not a referendum, this, this is an annual process, again, we're following the legal process that we're mandated to follow. And then the board approves whatever the recommended levy is.
And then you ask for more money from the taxpayers.
We're not asking, we're not asking for additional.
It sets the tax rate for the school district.
Yeah, we're not asking for additional money. This is what we're legally, legally entitled to.
Are there any other public comments?
Does it represent an increase versus last year, I think is what she's asking?
No, no, actually, depending upon what EAV, unfortunately, all of our numbers are estimated at this point in time, but we are anticipating that the tax rate will actually decrease because our EAV is increasing.
I guess one may need one of the data points to set aside that this is not a referendum. So those are two different things. So to ask for a referendum, to ask for higher taxes from the community is something different than what this is.
Yeah, just, yeah, just for clarification, this is not a question of whether we're asking the community for more money. This is a question of us asking the state of Illinois for, this is what we think we're gonna get.
Oh, okay.
Based on what you collect.
Okay, any other public comments? The President then declares that the public hearing on the proposed 2021 tax levy is closed. Okay, I think we'll go to public comments for tonight's meeting and then come back to our discussion on the IAS, IASB. Are there any public comments for tonight's Board of Education meeting?
Our clarification, Laura, do you have to announce the time for this, for the close of the referendum? I don't know if you have to record that at all.
As long as you've got it captured.
Yeah, no, even the minutes.
Okay, okay. I'll take it, thank you. Okay, Larissa Federley.
Hi, thank you for giving me the moment to speak here. I, my name is Larissa Federley, I have a student at the, at Westmont High School. And I'm a resident for over 15 years of Clarendon Hills. I reported here last month that the Westmont High School band boosters were preparing to welcome the surrounding community to our 31st Annual Craft Show on December 4th. You might remember my enthusiasm about that. On behalf of our Band Boosters Executive Board, I wanted to thank everyone who came out, shopped from the wide variety of craft offerings and supported the raffle and concession stand. I must also express our sincere gratitude to our band director, Allison Beederman, who was experiencing this event for her very first time and helped our junior high and high school students prepare to perform at the event. Our dedicated parents and students from both Westmont High School and Westmont Junior High School who volunteered before, during, and after this event to make it such a huge success. We were fortunate to have the support of several parent volunteers who no longer have students in the band program. We also wanna thank Westmont Special Events for including our district's fine art students in the Frosty and Friends performances and for including our event in their publicity efforts. And to the community for cheering on our students as they marched in the parade later that evening. The craft show is truly a labor of love that continues to bring our community together and generate amazing results for our students. Once we hear the feedback from our guests, it makes the work all worthwhile. This year, we estimate that we welcomed over 2,500 attendees, more than double the attendance that we've had in both the last two years we held the event. And we made a net profit of almost $10,000 for the band program. This will go a long way towards helping to ensure the band program has working instruments, marching uniforms, and that students will have access to enrichment opportunities in and outside of the classroom. Every year, we survey the crafters about their experience. I cannot overemphasize enough how much the crafters said they appreciated our students helping them unload and load their vehicles at the beginning and end of the day compared to their experiences with events at other school districts. We were told that everything was well organized and that the volunteers were friendly and helpful. Both shoppers and crafters told us they love to see that CUSD 201 is still valuing our music program. 25 crafters have already indicated that they would like to be part of next year's craft show on the first Saturday of December, December 3rd. And we anticipate many of the crafters that we had to turn away due to selling out this year will be joining us next year as well. Please save December 3rd on your calendars now and if a crafter is watching this now, please do reach out to us at WHSBandBoosters201@gmail.com to learn how to register. I wanted to also share with you that we are inviting band parents in the district, not just in the high school, but the whole district, 5th grade and up, to join the Band Boosters organization. We can work more efficiently towards a common goal when we work together. The craft show brought our community together, but we still have. The craft show brought our community together, but we still have work to do to rebuild the music program. It will continue to require the work, the work of parents, students, staff and administration and the school board and we're looking forward to continuing the momentum and we invite you to join us. Thank you.
Thanks, Larissa. Are there any other public comments tonight? If not, we'll continue on with the items on our information and discussion agenda, which we were in the middle of the board reporting from the IASB. I think there's a few other folks who wanted to comment about their experience.
Yeah, so just, you know, to piggyback, it was a, it was a very good experience and a super brand new experience. I did not know what to expect. I went to a number of different places and, and probably focused as, none of you would be surprised on efficiency. Shocked, I know, but there was, there was a lot of really interesting stuff. There was a student involvement, student involvement and decision-making out of Plainfield that was very interesting, where the high school students almost acted as ambassadors, which was really cool, and reported to the board and I think that that communication piece from especially our students is something that would help us as a board make better long-term decisions. I'm not saying that's what we should do, but it was a, an idea that, you know, just put in, in your radars. A lot of stuff about intra-board relationships, we're a brand new board really for the most part, you know, and how we can work better and a lot of, a lot of information about like balance and setting goals and getting ahead, you know, kind of to Carlos's point about, you know, the most important thing that a, that a board will do is hire the superintendent and we know that we have that on our horizon. So the sooner that, certainly one of the things about that, that panel that I got was the sooner we start planning for that and talking about that, the better. And one of the pieces about also communication and efficiency, you know, getting our community members, like Larissa's involved in our, in our PR committee, getting our community members involved with our committees really is one of the strengths of many boards that, that are able to make great decisions. And again, that piece of the communication to the board is not just from our administration, but from our community members, both those that are served by the community or by the schools and, and also maybe not served by the schools and also by our students who we serve. So really, you know, it was, it was a, it was a fun experience, but lots of learnings. Yeah.
Great. Anyone else want to comment? Okay, great. So we are going to move into our action items for tonight. The first action item is the approval of authorization for the treasurer to pay additional December 2021 expenditures. Are there any comments or questions before we? Okay, the chair will entertain a motion to authorize and direct the treasurer to pay bills received in December 2021 for the 2022 fiscal year as presented.
So moved.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Ms. Steckety?
Yes.
Ms. Coyle?
Yes.
Mr. Avia?
Yes.
Ms. Hoover?
Yes.
Ms. Redonia?
Yes.
Ms. Conover?
Yes.
Mr. Marin?
Yes.
Okay, number two, resolution to adopt the 2021 tax levy. The chair will entertain a motion to adopt the resolution setting the 2021 tax levy as presented.
So moved.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Ms. Coyle?
Yes.
Mr. Avia?
Yes.
Ms. Hoover?
Yes.
Ms. Redonia?
Yes.
Ms. Conover?
Yes.
Mr. Marin?
Yes.
Ms. Steckety?
Yes.
Number three, approval of Manning and Miller transition to grade level centers.
Just a couple of comments for the board. At our last board meeting, Lindsay Petersak and Tim Wyler, myself, we made a presentation to the board. This has been a long process for the district and we've had the input from many stakeholders. And again, the, the why that we are focused on is that we want to make sure that we're, we have a system that is equitable for all of our students and sustainable, that we're meeting the educational, social, emotional needs, again, of all of our students, that we're providing the support necessary for children to be successful and to challenge those students who need to be challenged. We want our model to be sustainable, that it's proactive rather than reactive and it's on, doesn't, isn't impacted by fluctuations in enrollments, which we have experienced in the past. And we, we did look at three options, you know, maintaining two K5 buildings, one K5 school and, and grade level centers. The, the K5 building is something that I think as a district we can explore in the future. Honestly, talking to our architect, that is a lengthy process, even to come up with some rough numbers. And for me to come to the board tonight and say, oh, it'll be, you know, 70 million for a new building and then we find out later on it's 100 million, I mean, that wouldn't be good for anyone. But at the same time, I think our community needs to know definitively what to plan for and where our district is headed. And so the recommendation of the administration is that we transition to grade level centers, Miller, a K1 building, Manning, a 25 building. We feel that that's what's best for our district, best for our students. In terms of any incurred cost, staffing wise, there is no additional cost with transitioning. If we're not in a pandemic, there might be some opportunities for savings. There's possibly an increase with transportation, but again, that won't be something we'll know until we put together our, our transportation plan for Miller and Manning. But overall, there is no additional cost to the district. And then we do have in place ways that we're going to assess the, the effectiveness of it. So there's not only the academic pieces, but also the social emotional pieces, there are several listed there. But we do believe, you know, the, the recommendation is to transition to grade level centers for Miller and Manning.
Is there any questions for Kevin before we vote?
Just one, as we discussed in our, the conference that we were at this past week or a couple of weeks ago, and your measures and what we're looking at and something that we, was brought up in comments and things like that. Also, with speaking of equity and things like that and coming up with a measure that I think this board has to pay attention to everything that you named, whatever the case may be, whatever the vote may be, but we are committed to continually assessing ourselves and how we're reaching those goals. So just want to make sure that that's part of assessment.
Definitely.
And on that continued assessment that we continue to look at and plan for trying to get all of our students into one building without raising taxes, it's been done in Lisle, Wheeling did it and they've got almost 50% low-income families. It can be done, so let's continue that.
Sure.
You know, that drive. It may take time.
Right, right.
But that needs to be, continue to be on our radar.
Any other comments or questions before we vote?
This, like Kevin said, this has been a long, long process. Before the pandemic, this was discussion as well, part of SIP, SIP committees, like STIPS, eh. As you can tell, I'm nervous, we're about to vote on something that's just been, something that's been long and drawn out and, but the process is there for a reason and I appreciate everybody who came forward and spoke, both sides, absolutely both sides. We don't take this vote lightly. We are not trying to please one person over another. We are looking at the future of our students and personally, I feel that Miller has been backed into a corner by having only one set of teachers in their monolingual class. Unfortunately, in the dual language, they are backed into a corner because that's only one class per every level. But over the years, I feel that Miller's just been backed into a corner to not be able to reach greatness and it's not due to their staff. It's due to the fact that every child is different and not every child can get along with every teacher and I've seen it at Manning. They can match teachers with personalities. Not every child has a 504 or an IEP or any kind of services, but child, children can't struggle and you can see where matches can be made and personalities can thrive and it works and it works for the students and the students are the number one priority in my eyes. I just needed to make that statement, so thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else have a comment?
Can I just say one more thing? I'm sorry.
Yes.
I'm sorry. I'm, I'm certain that I'm the only member of this board and one of very few members of the community that experienced, that had a child experience both of these schools And he's, he's better for it. He is better because of the difference in these schools that truly bring, they're just, they're, they're right, they, they just are. The things that Tim and Lindsay bring to their school are different, but amazing and all of our students will be better for knowing both of these administrators and the staff in, in both of these buildings. I saw it pre-pandemic and I know that a lot of our families have seen it obviously in the pandemic and it doesn't make it an easy decision, but as one of few people who has seen that and really truly has felt that and seen their child be better for it, it's a hard decision, but it's, I know, I know where my decision will be because of, because of that experience.
Anybody else? The chair will entertain a motion to approve Manning and Miller transition to grade level centers.
So moved.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Mr. Avia?
Yes.
Ms. Hoover?
Yes.
Ms. Redonia?
Yes.
Ms. Conover?
Yes.
Mr. Marin?
Yes.
Ms. Steckety?
Yes.
Ms. Coyle?
Yes.
Okay, the roof replacement has been taken off the agenda to be addressed at a upcoming meeting. Number five, the resolution authorizing a supplemental tax levy to pay the principal of and interest on outstanding limited bonds of Community Unit School District 201. The chair will entertain a motion to approve the resolution authorizing a supplemental tax levy to pay the principal of and interest on outstanding limited bonds of Community Unit School District number 201, DuPage County, Illinois as presented.
So moved.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Ms. Redonia?
Yes.
Ms., Ms. Conover?
Yes.
Mr. Marin?
Yes.
Ms. Steckety?
Yes.
Ms. Coyle?
Yes.
Mr. Avia?
Yes.
Ms. Hoover?
Yes.
Okay, number six, the approval of retirement contract for Linda Clawwater. The chair will entertain a motion to approve the 2021 retirement contract for Linda Clawwater as presented.
So moved.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Ms. Conover?
Yes.
Mr. Marin?
Yes.
Ms. Steckety?
Yes.
Ms. Coyle?
Yes.
Mr. Avia?
Yes.
Ms. Hoover?
Yes.
Ms. Redonia?
Yes.
Okay, Kevin, your superintendent's report?
A couple of items in my report. One is to echo a little bit of the public comment we had this evening. Last week, we had our junior high choral and band concert and our high school choral and band concert and I attended both of those concerts and I can tell you that, you know, a lot of things are, are difficult during a pandemic, but teaching chorus and band remotely and now, you know, in person and students are wearing masks sometimes, it's really a challenge. But Allison Beederman, our band director for both junior high and high school, Zach Troyer, our junior high choir director and Brett Erlob, our high school choir director, did an amazing job with the students over the last year and a half and really, all the groups sounded great and that's a credit to our students and our families and to our fine arts department and so they really did an amazing job, it was an enjoyable concert. Just.
Can I piggyback on that too with, I think another statement said at the junior high concert, the sixth graders, I have to applaud because they didn't have the fifth grade year with band and they did an awesome job.
They did.
Just learning how to read music, playing it. I was very proud of them, so I think we should acknowledge that also.
Sure, definitely. And you couldn't even tell that they didn't have a, have that fifth grade year. And then the board just approved Linda Clawwater's retirement contract and I want to take a moment to acknowledge Linda Clawwater, the CSD 201 Director of Stu and Services. Linda is retiring, her last day in the district is going to be December 31st, 2021. Linda is a very private person and normally Linda attends our board meetings, but I think part of her absence is she doesn't want any fanfare, she doesn't want any acknowledgement, she wants to go and retire as quietly as possible. But Linda has been a tremendous asset to our school district. Linda has helped so many families and forged so many relationships with our students and parents and staff. Linda will be missed as a colleague and as a friend and we wish her the best in her retirement. And then just a happy holidays to our 201 school community.
Thanks, Kevin. Are there any board reports tonight?
Oh, wait, wait, did you not get my email, Carlos?
Oh, I'm sorry. I'm so sorry.
Carlos has a board report. Carlos has a board report.
No, hold on one second. Yes, there is from the PR committee. If you just give me one second to grab my notes.
So I will just say, after Ms. Federley spoke, the craft fair was amazing. I think a couple, I saw a couple of us there, but I, I think we've set the bar pretty high for future.
It's such a hit, maybe twice a year?
I was going to say, you said junior high and the high school.
I know, this is, this is her last year, right, Larissa?
Larissa's mom there.
Someone must ask us if you do it this fair and we're like, oh, we don't want you to do this.
Okay, sorry about that. So from the, from the PR committee, yeah, there's a few things. One, one was the craft fair, we discussed, this was pre-planning and I just want to make mention that one of the, when it comes to the, the conversation earlier about the band and also from the PR committee and the, and the craft fair and everything and the music program in the school district, one of the things that was, for me anyway, one of the hardest things to swallow since I've, in my brief tenure so far on this board was, was some of the decisions we've made around this music program. I'm glad to hear that it's alive and kicking and fighting for its space in this district, which me personally, I'd like to give it as much as we possibly can, so. The other thing, a couple of other things we discussed, yard signs, those yard signs are now available. I know I have one. I, I don't know how the public gets their hands on them exactly.
They can contact either the district office or the high school.
Contact either the district office or the high school to get your hands on one of the, of the blue ribbon signs. The, we also talked about the Realtor Fair that we're planning for February 2nd, that's actually coming up pretty soon, it feels like. That's making me a little bit nervous all of a sudden. And also, we talked a bit about maybe reviving a newsletter for the district and that is a bit of a green discussion. It was just brought up at the last meeting. I don't think that we have a clear solution just yet, but that is watch this space because I think it will come soon. I think we made a lot of, had a lot of good ideas on the table that, that could result in something more concrete in, in a short period of time. And yeah, I think that's, that's it from the PR committee for now.
Okay. Thanks, Carlos and the PR committee. Any other board reports tonight?
Just going to piggyback on Carlos, other parents can join the PR committee. I know Larissa is there, but this is her last year on the PR committee and Larissa did design the yard signs, so thank you. Yeah, join the meetings, reach out to Amy Quattrone and we can fill you in and get you in there. We like a lot of ideas to get things going, so yeah. And I did go to the PR session at the conference and I have a lot to discuss with the group before I bring it back to the board, so.
Excellent. Are there any other public comments tonight? Okay, future meetings and events. Semester one, quarter two ends on December 17th. Winter break runs December 20th through January 3rd. There's a Teacher Institute Day on January 4th and classes resume for students on January 5th, 2022. There's an Elementary PTO and Committee Meeting on January 10th, 2022 at 6:00 PM at Manning Elementary. at six PM at Manning Elementary School, and our next school board meeting will be January eleventh at six PM at Village Hall.
Or can I mention another event?
Yeah.
Um, so there, we, they'd get, the board received this email, um, but also is asked of the public and our parents and community members, um, that at the junior high, the eighth grader giving, they're having a speaker's corner, and they're giving speeches, and I have an eighth grader who's working very hard, um, and asking for people to come and listen and give feedback, so, um, reach out to the junior high, um, or, um, Ms. Quatron, she can give you information to sign up and, um, be a part of that. I think it's actually in, on Thursday.
It's on Thursday, yeah. There's two sessions.
Yeah, Thursday morning, if I remember right. Great, thank you. Okay, um, that's it, we were finished with closed session, so, um, the chair will entertain a motion to adjourn the December fourteenth, twenty-twenty-one regular meeting of the Board of Education.
So moved.
Second. Second.
Those in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Okay, meeting adjourned.